...monitor that is in the rear of the chamber now, so if you're sitting back there, which is typically city staff, police officers, or if it's very full and people choose to sit back there, or not, there's a monitor back there now. They see the exact same thing that's on the overhead, which is the same thing that's being streamed out to the internet. The last thing that we did was originally when we proposed this, we came to council, we talked about the ability of doing the push, or the request to speak option, which we use the city of Seattle as kind of our guinea pig for that. We created that system here. It does work, and I'll show you that here in a second. Each one of your mics, when you're using a push-to-talk scenario, or request to speak, all of the mics are always turned off. The mayor's mic might be the only active one that's on, and then each of you, the button that you use to turn the mics on, if you hold that button down for two seconds when your mic is off, you will see that it starts to flash. When it flashes, there's a screen that is at the mayor's desk and also at the clerk's desk, that actually will put every one of you in a queue, one through seven. The mayor can see who the first person is to talk and who the last person is. They can also type in names. We did that so that if people like South Sound 911, or other agencies come in, or the public, they might not know who's sitting, you know, at Councilmember Moss's desk versus, you know, Councilmember Barth's. So what they'll do is they can type in their names, and then they can quickly look at the screen and go, "Oh, it's Jim, and Janice, and Steve," and that sort of thing. So it's really easy to tell who's up there speaking. The first person in the queue, the light flashes faster than everybody else's, so if I'm in the audience, I can tell who the next person is to speak. Most people wouldn't know that, but it also lets you know what queue you're in, who the next person is to talk. When the push-to, or the request to speak option is on, there's a number over everybody's head, and it's as simple as activating the mic. Your mic comes on, you can talk, and if the mayor chooses to turn your mic off, he can turn it right back off, and then the next person in queue becomes number one. So it just drops the number every time that we turn somebody on and off. So generally speaking, that's the main overview of the system. There's a lot of other stuff we've done. We utilize existing cabling to cut costs down. We utilize existing staff in the facilities department to run additional cabling. We changed out some of the electrical outlets that we had. We hot, or we made these floor jacks hot, so that when you guys do a study session, or somebody else uses it, you notice we have the smart board out there. So we have the ability to display to the overhead, to the rear, to the internet, to the dais, and to the smart board all at the same time. Two of them could be different, but generally, they're all the same as when we're doing the stream to every station. Trying to think if there's anything else that I missed. Nope, I think that's it. So with that, I'd be glad to show you the request to speak, or answer any questions before I pop over there.
Looks like I already need a remedial lesson.
So if I press...
So, so the mic's fine, but the control panel...
Yeah, there's a couple ways of turning the mics on. You can do it by the mic by pushing the button, and there's also on the screen, there's a way to turn the mics on and off.
So I can't tell on the control panel...
I'll come over and show everybody.
Where I'm gonna go here, podium PC, I guess.
Alright.
We have...
So we can just kind of gather at the mayor's station there, and it's very easy, five minutes, you guys should get it.
Yeah.
So mine's on right now, even though it says it's red.
All the mics are on.
Easy for you to say.
Red is on.
Red is on, but...
I'll share.
So if I can just slide over here and...
And how do we... Yeah, we'll turn it sideways.
And I'll kind of show you the quick on and off functions that we have. It literally is as easy as clicking on this and dragging it off, and we can turn things on and off.
Okay, I'm just, I'm worried to start with, about the mics.
Oh, the mics, sure.
How do we recognize, how do people ask, they'll ask to be recognized orally, not just by pushing the mic on.
Yes, so, the way that, so under the advanced audio screen...
Okay, so that's what it is.
This has a layout of the dais and all the mics all the way around. So there's a way of turning people on and off, just by, so if we're at the mayor's station here, you can see that the red is on for mic on. If I click on this, his light turns off. So if I just go to everybody, and turn everybody's mic, oops, turn them all off. Actually, I can do it. Button here, this is an interesting one. We added this so that if, if there's a lot of conversation going on, and the mayor just wants to shut the mics off quickly, this council mute button will turn...
He'll do that to me all the time.
I've never done that, because all I have to do is backhand Mr. Simpson.
There you go. So now, what happens, if you press council mute, it'll actually disable all the mics, with the exception of the mayor, the city manager, the attorney, and the clerk. Those mics will stay, those mics will stay active, but everybody else is off.
So how do people get recognized for their mic, get their mic in the queue?
So let me show you that. You're always on. So, for example, if we wanted this mic here to go, if I just press and hold this, push...
The big button.
The on, you'll notice that that starts to flash, and if I go back to this screen here, request to speak, there's a one.
Oh, I see.
Somebody have to go to request to speak.
Generally, you would always be at the request to speak screen. Easier just to look.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure I can get it. Make sure it's on, and I don't mess it up by being up there.
Well, the big key, though, now, for the first time, we'll have a queue before you decide to decide.
Well, no, I still decide. It's who I recognize.
So what happens is now that the mics are in the queue, you'll notice that you've got one, two, and three on there. So for example, if we wanted to, first person to speak, all you do is press mic on. His mic is on, he's now off the queue. You would press mic off, and then when the next person's ready, just go to them, press mic on. That one's live, turn it off. The last one, which is still blinking, click on that one, turn it on, turn it off. So it's as easy as pressing the button. You have to, your mics have to be off.
So what happens now if I recognize Mr. Bulkey, and he pushes his button? Does it go on?
Uh, yeah. So if he holds it down for two seconds, it'll start flashing.
Which means he wants to be recognized.
No, but I mean, without being recognized, can he just, do we have a manual mode?
Yes. So, the manual mode is, press it just one, one second, just real quick. Just press it down and turn it on, and then like that.
Okay, so now I'm, I'm live. So red means live, actually.
Red is live, and on these mics...
And then I can, then I can turn on. Okay.
Yep.
That's a kill switch.
And if somebody, if somebody is actually up at the podium, you'll know that, notice that that light is not on right now. So if they were to start speaking, nobody would hear them, but the mayor could actually go, excuse me, to the advanced audio screen, shows everybody, highlight the podium, and click mic on. Now that the mic is on...
So what if I'm here, okay, Paul, hit your button.
Yeah, if he goes into request to speak, you won't, you won't see that on this screen.
Okay, so request to speak, I won't see it.
So you'd have to go back and go to request to speak, and then that's where he's at. So generally, this would be the screen.
So his won't, his, yeah, his, his won't go on if we have it in advanced audio.
You can press it once, and then turn it off.
Okay, what turns it off?
Uh, just another press. So one press to turn it on, one press to turn it off. Yeah, and with these mics, they're so sensitive that really, you can, you don't have to lean into them. But we noticed last time, which actually was the mayor, he grabbed the mic and it fell through the floor, if you remember that.
Yeah, I was gonna tilt it over.
Those ones over there, we moved it down about eight inches, because some of the people that were a little bit vertically challenged, were saying, "We can't talk in it, because it's so far back." So we used TAW as an example, we could pull it closer. And so it's very simple now to talk on that, but we still have people that want to come up and grab it. And if they push down, because it's just a rubber grommet that's holding that, if they push down too hard, it'll actually push it out. We have a quick fix, we think we're gonna mount underneath it to hold it, but really, people don't need to touch it.
Alligator clip.
We're gonna actually use an electrical box, a couple screws underneath, and it'll, it'll work. George is gonna do it. But it's very easy to use the mics, again, you don't need to lean into them. There's also the ability, which kind of gets a little bit more advanced. If you start to hear ping, like if you're talking and you start to hear a ping overhead, or it starts to ring, this volume right here that says mic, this is the room volume. So if it's a little too loud and it starts to ping, the clerk or yourself could actually just take this and lower this down. And you want to just do it a little bit to kind of hear what it is.
So, advance gives me control over this one, right?
Yep, and then you would just hit the mic off if you wanted to turn it off. So that'll turn the podium mic off.
Well, how do, how do I tell?
So, when you press that to red, the blue is just a selected mic that you're queuing.
Okay.
So when you press this and it's red, just remember, red is red, red is on.
Okay, and blue, blue is the indicator that that's on.
Blue is the one that you're on.
Okay. Good enough. So then go back, and I want to be here. What if I am in the request to speak mode, and when people are speaking up there, can we turn the mic on?
Yeah, so then, to do that, it is back to advanced audio, highlight it, and then make sure that it's gray, which is off. If anything's red on here, that means it's on.
So I'm, I'm talking about turning it on.
Yep, then you would just hit that button, make it red.
Okay, and this one stays on.
Well, the podium mic is active.
Okay.
Now it's off.
Alright.
The last thing that I'll show you, so in council study sessions, those little mics that we have on the table, if you forget about all of what we just looked at, these four are the council, are the study session mics. Whenever we're in study session, this has to be turned off. These are the, this is, controls the overhead speakers. When they're on, they make so much sound straight down, that those mics start to hum, and you'll start to hear a ringing or a beeping that happened, or it'll go into that really loud squeal. If you ever hear the squeal, it's just the volume on the front page, just turn it down. But the mics here, we always turn that off when it's study session. And we never touch any of this other stuff. So really, for the mayor's standpoint, it's, request to speak is the only screen he would ever be at, unless he wants to adjust the volume in the room, then it's this volume. This volume is if we're playing any type of audio or video off of the podium PC. So if someone's playing audio or video, this is the volume for that. This is the main room. So of everything I've shown you, it's this volume for the room, and then request to speak is how you can do that. And then if you want to shut everybody off, there's other ways to get to it. It's pretty simple. We made it, tried to make it as easy as possible for the council.
I've been trying to push those old numbers on the side for that secret writing.
Oh, here, no, sorry ma'am, it's the center one, so it's literally just press...
Beat it.
Yeah, there, it's kind of a bad design.
It's dark gray on black.
You can't see it, okay, probably see it.
Yeah, so if you come in and your mics are off, you can just press them and turn them on, but we've also instructed the clerk to look and see if they're off, to, hey, if all the mics are off, just turn them off. And then...
Simple.
Well, that's, that's your call. From our last presentation, we did, we're expressing the mayor, we just like to look, lean over to each other and ask a question. So if you choose not to use request to speak, they all can just be on like normal, and you can turn them off if you want. Generally, we just all leave them off, and then if you just don't want yourself, if you're, if you're shivering through papers, or you're coughing, then we would ask you to just turn them off. Same with, the ones that are on the tables, you would never touch those, those are just always there. But up here, it's as simple as press one, and then press again to turn on. And then, the problem that we have is people forget the overhead. So like, right now, that audio is in the back half of the room, there's nothing in the front, so when we turn these back on, it's the overhead. So really, it's just this volume, and this is where we have, we instructed the clerk and others, if you're in the room, if it's too low, just, this is the volume, turn it up.
You're not going anywhere.
I'm here for a few minutes. But it works fine, and Alex knows, and she's good. But it's very simple.
It works, okay.
Okay.
And we'll have instructions actually up here that will be laminated on the desk, and we'll have them at the clerk's station as well. Oh, I didn't even look. Okay, I see her.
A lot of technology.
My wife's real station.
The song.
I don't know why it's not on. It might have been recorded.
It's very easy to use. We tried to make it as easy as possible, really just, if the mayor chooses to use request to speak, it's available. You guys just have free time.
There's a few things to choose from there.
One button, quick to turn them on. And you don't even have to fumble with the screen, unless you're doing the request to speak. So hopefully, that's easier now.
I think we... But tonight, we'll learn.
And I'll make sure the volume's up, and that's when the meeting starts. There's no presentation, so I'm gonna turn this off. And actually, that, that's very simple to turn off, we just drag and drop.
So water, I need water.
I have asked that session. I have had to change it this way, this way.
Mend the agenda, and you write after this.
It's very easy.
This is...
Do it this way, so it's kind of...
Mend the agenda, and consider...
It's very easy.
Right, here, reading the proclamation.
If it's, if it's kind of this...
Mend the agenda.
Alice is concerned.
Oh, okay, mend the agenda, but not include it there, mend the agenda.
Mend the agenda, and put it right there.
Okay, okay.
Didn't that, did you talk to her about that tomorrow?
I knew we had to put it in, yeah.
I don't know if I can tell you where to put it.
Yeah. Yeah, we considered, well, it's a motion, it's not even an ordinance, so...
We can, that's why we...
Well, it should be, but it's a motion, right?
People had to turn, move out of the way.
So it's gonna be here, before it's motions, to add a motion, and we'll hear it right here. Okay.
Yep.
Okay, wait a second, we got a quorum at the DS, we have to adjourn.
The special, special council meeting for May 21st, 2018 is adjourned. I'd like to call the, whoa, call the regular meeting Lakewood City Council for Monday, May 21st, 2018, to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Barth, Councilmember Bulkey, Councilmember Branstadter, Councilmember Moss, Councilmember Simpson, Deputy Mayor Whalen, Mayor Anderson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Now, would you all please rise with me in a moment of silence in honor of our men and women serving overseas, followed by the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Bulkey?
I would like to make a motion to amend the regular agenda, to include consideration of filing a declaratory action regarding adult family home businesses in advance of consideration of ordinance 682, the first line item, the first item on the regular agenda of tonight's regular council meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been a motion, a second, to amend the agenda by including the consideration of a motion as the first item during the regular agenda. That motion being to, motion regarding adult family home business filing a lawsuit. Is there any further discussion? While in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries that item will be considered on the regular agenda. We now move to proclamations and presentations. The first item of business is a business showcase featuring Pacific Machine. Would Mr. Jim Shipperly, the owner, please join me at the podium?
Well, it's always a pleasure to recognize businesses in Lakewood, those important employers and generation, generators of tax revenue, among other things. It doesn't grow on trees, it takes people out there, working long hours every day to make it happen. Located at 8601 38th Avenue Southwest, Pacific Machine, Inc. has been in business for more than 100 years. Its customers span the globe and include companies like Dairy Queen, Green Mountain Coffee Roasters, and Toray Composite Materials, located in Frederickson. Industries served include foundry, heavy equipment, woodworking, food production, paper goods, marine, road construction, and plastics. Pacific Machine troubleshoots clients' problems finding solutions that increase efficiency and production. It also has the necessary large-scale equipment to take on just about any job, including water jet technology that can cut through inches-thick steel or create intricate designs on a thin sheet of copper. In 2014, Pacific Machine, Inc. was named the Emerging Small Manufacturer of the Year by Seattle Magazine, quite an honor. And in 2017, the facility served as the backdrop for a visit by Governor Jay Inslee, who was there to mark the first Youth Apprentice Signing Day for the Aerospace Joint Apprenticeship Committee's Production Technician Program. Pacific Machine has operated a four-year apprentice program for the last 16 years with a focus on developing and training the next generation of workers. It's because of this commitment to education and on-the-job training, and its diverse customer base to include international companies, that the Lakewood City Council recognizes Pacific Machine as its May 2018 Business Showcase. I'd like to present you with this plaque, and invite you to say a few words about your company.
Thank you. When you've been in business 100 years, you have a lot to say, but I haven't been there 100 years, so maybe I don't have a lot to say. But there are some things I would like to say. First of all, I'd like to thank the council for this award, and Becky Newton for inviting me to be here. It's really interesting, actually, I've been in Lakewood a long time. My second son was born in Lakewood General Hospital, and some of you may remember that, was on a street out here. So, and I lived in Lakewood for quite some time, but I have to say something about Mike Larson at Allen Realty, because he was able to sell my house at the bottom of the housing market, and I had two houses for a year, so I really appreciated that. There's a lot to, to do in a business, and so when Bren came and talked to me about some things, I said, "Well, can I give you some pictures?" And she said, "Sure." So I started going through this portfolio of pictures, and what I came across was a scene that I think all small businessmen would really like to have in their life, and that is, it's the Lands Inn in Cabo San Lucas. It's a nice picture, if you've ever been there, you gotta see that. And then the next picture that came up was from a rafting trip I was on with some of my employees, and we had just gone over a waterfall, if you can see that, and the three-quarters of the raft is underwater, and then there's my arm with my wedding ring hanging onto the rope, secured to the side of the raft. And that's what being in a small business is really like. You're under the, underwater three-quarters of the time, you're hoping you come back up and survive. Thank you very much.
Take care.
Thank you.
We now move to the public comment section of our agenda. This is when any member of the public may speak to any issue of pertinence to council, whether or not it is on the agenda. When your name is called, please step to the podium. You have three minutes allocated time. The yellow light comes on, a 30-second warning, the red light comes on when your time is up. Please identify yourself by name and city of residence, such as Marie Barth, Lakewood, Washington. First person who has signed up is Mr. Glenn Spieth.
Glenn Spieth, Lakewood. Just in case, I did bring my wife's hearing aid. So we'll see how this night works out. Couple of pieces of advice, I'd say when you have your, your study session down here, you don't put the microphone, the wireless microphone, behind the computer screens that you have. You need to talk direct into or toward all of those microphones, even the ones you got up there, or it's difficult to hear it back here. Hopefully, I'm not gonna need to use this, but it does work. It's a little noisy, but it, it does work. Second thing I wanted to bring up is, it looks like I'm gonna have to put in a fence in the back part of my property. Right now, the materials alone are $3,000 bucks for 110 feet of fencing, six foot, and we're getting a little bit of ring. I guess my voice is just right for this microphone system. But $3,000 for material, probably a couple of grand for installation, but that's to keep the graffiti off my vehicles, and the people poop from my rear yard area, because they don't use the bathrooms at Coana's Park, at least a lot of people don't. And it's unfortunate, but that's the way it's been for a lot of years, ever since they put in the skateboard board park. Thank you.
Next person is Mr. Dennis Haugen.
That old-school technology.
Dennis Elgin, Lakewood, Washington.
Well, first of all, Texas has taken the lead, throwing the press insecurely. In Texas, our budget, we've got $800 million to each of our budgets, to do the job that Obama did. And thank God for Donald Trump. He can't handle this, he knew what he was talking about. America, we act, Americans supporting him today. Earlier, you're, yes, that's something I was able to believe. I think around 50 percent are Republican, 85 to 90 percent. People get that this president stands for Americans, and not criminals coming as an employee. So in terms of the natural guard, the league will help them, and I hope the leaders appear and help this over, or build a wall of this, because it makes a difference. Rick Perry called out the national guard four years ago, seeing the moving muscle made him nervous. When he had been in written uniforms, came to the border, it sends a message to people that we are serious about protecting our country. We're all in in Texas, with President Obama.
So the government needs to stand on that, and how crime from the illegal immigration has affected the state of Texas, both in terms of human costs and economic costs on the state.
But let's just look at the facts. I hear Democrats and liberals all the time, on other networks, decline the criminal crimes committed by the leaders. Number one, in Texas, Oklahoma, in the last fall year, we've put in our jail over 245,000 criminal arrests, we look back, we've charged over 650,000 crimes, we attract over 50,000.
Members, pay attention.
566 murders, 274 kidnapping, of a president, Trump, must have already, in Texas, in the last seven years, rebound with 244 psycho assaults, joined that with 40,000 other assaults, 40,000 drug crimes, thousands of gun crimes, and thousands and thousands of gang members like MS-13 and this country committee crime. But I hear the mayor publicly saying, "Sanctuary cities make us sacred," it is nonsense, absolutely nonsense. it is nonsense, absolutely nonsense. And in Texas, we passed Senate Bill 4 last February, early March 7, and it's been upheld by the courts. We now have the power to police, if they want to ask where you're coming from and ask this and your documents, you can do it in Texas. Secondly, if Jerry Brown tried to pull stuff like he's doing in California, which I think is total manarchy, he's not a pulling his own hook. He opened Jerry Brown up to the same thing that I took or Governor Abbott took, except the state changed the name. But we swear that all of our conversations into a whole wall of the country and I'm standing very proud of that. But in Texas, if any of our Democrats respond what you would like, we number one respond in our city.
This keeps numbers, something Washington doesn't do when it comes to these kinds of things.
Okay, the next person who's signed up is Rodney McLean.
Good evening, council members. Yes, my name's Rodney McLean. I'm here representing MB Partnership on the Stormwater Credit Issue for the Surface Water. And I'd just like to start out by saying that consultant and so forth, it's kind of overwhelming. There's 90 pages. It's FCS out of Redmond. And I tried to contact him, but was unable to do so. Called him twice, but I didn't even receive a call back. But I'd like to summarize, I spoke before. And I'd like to see that the credits, if they are to be reduced over, say, a seven, eight-year period, and not such a drastic decrease. It would help, as Pierce County has lowered theirs over 10 years. So a gradual reduction, I could make work. But I'd appreciate your consideration to not take the credits to 43% from 85% in one year. Thank you.
Next person signed up is John Ficker.
Good evening, thank you. My name is John Ficker. I'm from the city of Lacey, Washington. And I'm here representing the Adult Family Home Council this evening. And speaking to ordinance number 682, which would place a moratorium on adult family homes, the nature of the ordinance is beyond the scope of the authority of the city. The ordinance is aimed at restricting housing, which is contrary to the public good. RCW 70128.005 states that prohibiting public land, prohibiting the use of property for adult family homes is contrary to the public good. It is also, we believe, a violation of the Americans with Disability Act and the Fair Housing Standards. You have citizens in Lakewood now who have purchased property for the intent of opening adult family homes. Placing that moratorium and interrupting that process will gravely impact those folks in a negative manner. Your existing adult family home providers, all 81 of them, also have the right to potentially sell that home and business, and you are putting a stop in front of that, which will have a negative impact on them. And while you, in your ordinance, claim that the reason for this proposal is related to a potential discharge from Western State Hospital, I really find that disingenuous. I was here 12 months ago talking to this council about adult family homes prior to any of those concerns being raised. And you asked me if I was all right with the ghettoization of the Oak Brook neighborhood by the adult family home providers. You also discernment that neither Department of Social and Health Services or the adult family home providers that are trained and licensed by the state do not have the appropriate requisite capacity to either place appropriate people into the regular community, which I find very insulting, not only to the work that the department does, but to the hard work that these individual adult family home operators do. Your own study that you shared with me last year showed that there's been no drop in property value, no increase in police or EMS or other first responders. In fact, adult family homes are a great asset to your community. They are reducing the backlog in your hospital. They are helping people live in the most community-based option available. In my opinion, this really boils down to nothing more than a "not in my backyard" kind of story. When I look at other, when I talk to other cities and other communities, they would love to have the problem that you have. But I think that it's outrageous that you've continued to move on with these, and I hope that I can spend my next year, instead of arguing with the city council or taking legal action if necessary, that we would be able to work together to understand how we all live and work in the same community, that we spend more time training and securing safety for the residents who are living in those facilities than we do with these ordinances that are, on their face, not legal. Thank you.
Next person signed up is Brian Poehl. B. Okay. You don't choose to speak, then we'll move to Don McSperren.
Good evening, my name is Don McSperren, Lakewood resident, Oak Brook. First, I'd like to thank the city for taking what I think is a balanced approach to solving what has been a problem for 10, 15 years, the group homes, be they adult family homes or other group homes, in our community. The moratorium, I would like to speak in support of the proposed Lakewood Ordinance 682 that places a six-month moratorium on new adult family homes, group homes, ESSs, et cetera, and residential zones. I think it's a very reasonable thing to do for this city to further explore the issues, to bring sides together, and to really come up with a way that the city and the industry and the community can live with adult family homes and group homes. I firmly support adult family homes. But when an adult family home, such as the one on Turquoise, that has just engaged the process of opening up in the last weeks or so, when they, when they start, gets a word with disingenuous that I just heard from the previous speaker, they tell the neighbors that, yes, we're moving into this home ourselves. They've put no trespassing signs up, the only no trespassing signs in the entire community. And they live on a golf course, which by covenants in the neighborhood require golfers have access to all the properties in the neighborhood to retrieve golf balls. Work being done without permits, and the home is a two-story home. So one of our concerns as a community is that Western State Hospital and the state are solving their budgetary and their bed problems by proposing or by planning to place civilly committed patients into transitional institutionalized housing within our community. We do not want our neighborhood, our community, we don't want Lakewood to be institutionalized. We want to have our neighborhood as a community for everybody. So I would, as I said, encourage you to pursue the moratorium. Once again, I think it's balanced. And once again, we support adult family homes when it's done right. Thank you.
Next person to speak is Robert Miller.
Robert Miller, I live in Lakewood. I'm the president of the Fourth Edition Homeowners Association. And we are not against adult family homes. We support the concept, but we support the moratorium so that the city can get control of the adult family home situation. Last week, Don stole some of this. Last week, we had a stop order from the city to prevent a home from being converted to an adult family home without permits. Now, this is not the only one, and there may be more, who are going below the radar, developing these homes. And then I don't know where the goes from there. We also have other situations regarding this. We have a situation where we have 17 adult family homes in the fourth edition of 345 homes, and two clusters, one of six on Coral and one of three on Opal. We also have, and I'll be sending this information to John, we also have a neighbor who has reported that there may be more than the allotted number of residents in a home on Turquoise. And that information, John, will be coming to you soon. We feel that the city has to take control of this situation so that out of the 348 homes, we wind up with every other home being an adult family home. Thank you.
Next person is, pardon me on the last name here, Nolan Solte. Looks like N-O-L-O-N-S-O-E-T-E.
Didn't want to talk.
Don't want to talk? Okay. And we'll move on to Maria Chichi. David Lord.
Good evening, my name is David Lord, and I work for Disability Rights Washington. I'm the Public Policy Director at Disability Rights Washington. Disability Rights Washington is a statewide organization with a protection and advocacy system for Washington State. And what we do is provide assistance to people with disabilities and advocacy on behalf of people with disabilities under their direction regarding their rights and to defend their rights. And we're concerned about the ordinance 282 and actually the pattern that's come with it, which, you know, the pattern of disapproving the location of people with disabilities in your community through ordinance, through the ordinance process. This is a concern because, and I should probably state what our interest is, which is an interest that comes out of the Americans with Disabilities Act, that people with disabilities live in the most integrated settings that are appropriate to them. And one of the common things that happens in communities is that ordinances are passed that restrict people and try to restrict them where they can live. And that's what we're concerned with here. That's, people with disabilities living in the community is, should be regarded as enriching to a community. And we think that having adult family homes and other sorts of, other sorts of agencies and organizations and homes that assist people and make sure that they are safe and that they have the kind of support that they need in the community is absolutely essential. It's something that we're going to see more and more of. We have an age wave, as you're probably aware. There are more and more people who live in their own homes who are going to be moving to adult family homes. And there are more and more people that are in institutions who are moving into the community. And that when they move to the community, they should have the kind of support that they can have in an adult family home. So there are a variety of laws. I think there's a, you've been presented with letters that indicate some of those, and I'm sure you'll see more as time goes on. The Fair Housing Act, the state law, and I pointed out the Americans with Disability Act all support the idea that people with disabilities need to be, need to not be restricted by city ordinances and other kinds of local ordinances in where they live. And so we hope that you won't proceed with this direction, because we don't think it's supported by the law. Thank you.
That's all the people who have signed up to speak at public comment, but that doesn't preclude you. If you wish to speak, please come up to the podium, identify yourself, and you'll be given three minutes. But if there's someone who, behind this lady who wishes to speak, please come on up and queue up behind her. When the queue is run out, I'll cut off public comment, so.
Thank you, Mayor. My name's Patricia Hunter. I'm the State Long Term Care Ombudsman. I was here a few weeks ago for the council meeting and witnessed the passing of 680. And I'm here today to talk about 682, or did 682, and express my concern and opposition to the council passing this ordinance. The ombudsman program is a federal program. We represent long-term care residents who live in nursing homes, assisted living, and adult family homes. We are volunteer-based, and we also have a small staff of 16 across the state. We advocate for resident rights, and we promote their legal rights and civil rights. This ordinance concerns me, because I believe there will be many individuals with disabilities and elderly people right here from Lakewood who won't have the opportunity to live in the community. I want to let you know that with, we have one volunteer who visits almost all of the adult family homes in Lakewood, and she has not received any complaints from any of the neighbors or any of the community members about the adult family homes being inappropriate or residents disturbing the neighborhood. I want you to know that we're a resource. If you have a complaint about care in adult family homes or concerns about the care that's being delivered there, I'd like to be a resource to all of you and to your citizens. I'm going to give you some of our brochures and our phone number, and encourage you to give us a call. We resolve problems at the lowest possible level and quickly. We try to keep things out of government, and we try to keep things out of the court system. So I would love to offer our services to all of you to try to, I don't know, mediate is too strong of a word, but maybe sit down and try to work out some kind of a solution. Again, we haven't been contacted. I don't know if the adult family home providers have been contacted. And I think there's a lot of mystery and sort of fear about who lives in adult family homes. I've worked with, in long-term care for 28 years. I can tell you, the majority of people who live in adult family homes are elderly individuals with disabilities and adults with disabilities. And yes, you do have in your community people who have committed crimes and sexual offenses living in adult family homes. I live in University Place. I'm actually from Lakewood. I went online and looked up how many registered sexual offenders live in University Place. 2,000 live in University Place, and I don't know where they live. So this is the state of our community. People who have committed crimes and served their time, who now need care, have the option to live in adult family homes, nursing home or assisted living. And I understand you're putting forward this moratorium. I'd like to know more about what kind of assessment, what kind of study you're going to do. That's not been really made clear. And I would just like to encourage you to, let's keep this out of the courts, and let's have a conversation and see if we can find some remedies. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Susan Sorensen, here again on the app to speak to moratorium, I believe, at 682, in favor of that. Again, as I've said the other times I've been here, I'm not against adult family homes. I see their need. I appreciate the fine work that those, the people do that own the homes. I am, however, opposed to having registered sex offenders and the Mr. Butterfield-type literally in my backyard. That's what this is about. It's not about just the elderly that we're concerned about. It's not working the way that it is. I understand there's people that are saying, you know, well, I've bought a house, or I have the intention of opening it, and it'll be a hardship on me. The home that I live in, my parents bought in 1976. We're talking about 42 years in that home. And in that home, we've, my husband and I renovated, put a lot of time and money into it to have it be our home. You know, it's, they're not the only folks who are invested in the homes in this community. There's a lot of people in the Oak Brook area that have been here for years and years and years, far longer than most of the adult family homes. But that's not the point. We just want the community to be safe. I think the moratorium is reasonable, so we can get some questions answered. And coming back to, in the packet, you requested information from DSHS, and it hasn't come forward. I believe there's a reason for that. I believe there's a reason you're not getting answers. And that this moratorium will allow time to get those answers. And then we can go forward in a reasonable way. Thank you for your time, and thank you for your efforts. I appreciate that. Oh, and one other thing. I'd like to be in a place where, you know, I remember when I bought the house, it used to be that a cul-de-sac in Oak Brook was supposed to be a place where your kids could play. And you could, they could ride their bikes, and it would be safe, not counting a parking lot for how many places you can have for your employees to park and visitors to come visit. So I'd like it to still be a place where kids ride their bikes. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is John Mecca. I am, I'm part of the Oak Brook neighborhood in Lakewood. I'm also a member of the Board of the Seventh Edition in Oak Brook. I'm the Seventh Edition. I'm the secretary and also code enforcement. I need to counter the comment that the young lady made that there's never any complaints about adult family homes. I just got a call this week about an adult family home in Oak Brook, not only for the neighbor causing problems with traffic and all cars coming in and out for over a year, but now they have a boat sitting, not a boat, I'm sorry, an RV sitting in the driveway, which violates the codes of our neighborhood as well. So I stand in support fully, a hundred percent, on the moratorium on six eighty-two. Thank you.
Jordan Michelson, Lakewood, Washington. Tonight, I'm here to talk to the council one more time about the ordinance dealing with retail marijuana in the city. For some of the people that have been keeping their ears open as to what's going on on the national level, you can see every cycle, the tides are changing. Things are moving towards the, what I feel is inevitability of the federal government changing their stance and changing the stance that marijuana has no medical value at all. This is something that helps people out, whether they're sick, whether they're stressed. You know, it's no different than alcohol and tobacco, too. So with that, I just want to say I hope the council has balanced, and I'm sure you have, and considered all of the options and implementations that it has in Lakewood. I still do believe that there are some unique and powerful opportunities that the council can grab onto to use for this money. Some people say, you know, it's pennies for what the city has as a whole. Well, all of what the city has as a whole comes from pennies then. It is everyone collected together to contribute to this city. And that's what I'm asking for you to do, is to contribute to the city, contribute to a resident, to become another business owner in the city, to employ people within the city, to give people a safe and reliable option in which they can go and purchase this then. So it's been a long, strange road, but it's been interesting, and it's been a learning and growing experience. So thank you, as always, for your time, council.
My name is Orin Tovar, Lakewood resident, business owner and student. I am here because I am also in favor of local marijuana retailers in the city of Lakewood. But mostly, I am here because I am concerned. First of all, I'm concerned that in the city's attempt to protect Lakewood from this new negative impact of these local marijuana retailer stores, you are actually missing out on a significant revenue opportunity for the city of Lakewood. I'm concerned that Lakewood will fall to the wayside as surrounding cities who took advantage of the opportunity and local state law actually prosper. I'm also concerned that the people of Lakewood's voices are being heard but not necessarily represented. I'm concerned that we sit here discussing the allowance to retail marijuana stores in Lakewood when it was already voted on years ago, and we should be discussing their zoning and implementation. But most of all, I'm concerned that by attempting to protect Lakewood by refusing local marijuana retailers within the city, you are actually making a perfect neighborhood for black market drug dealers. I'd never been more relieved when marijuana became available in stores. Finally, a legal and safe place for me to purchase something that I truly need, something that helps me combat my dysfunctional stomach symptoms. I wasn't able to get this before. I'd never been so relieved. It's a safe and surveilled place that's guaranteed not to offer me the drugs that our local drug dealers in Lakewood will. Thank you for your time, council.
I'm Laney Snotgrass. I'm a resident of Lakewood, and in fact, I live on turquoise, where this group home is being arranged, shall I say, from a two-story to chopping all inside, whatever you have to do to convert, three bedrooms upstairs, one down. I certainly second what has been said about a six-month moratorium. I think this issue needs further study. To change the culture of a neighborhood is a pretty drastic thing to do. And then you have someone who's building this group home, has no permits. Trespassing signs is one thing. Another thing is actually giving verbal orders to the neighbor, "Don't touch this property. Don't set foot on this property." What kind of a tone does this set for the neighborhood?
As no one else has signed up and no one's in the queue to speak, I declare public comment closed. We now move the consent agenda, Madam Clerk.
On the consent agenda, A, approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of May seven, two thousand eighteen; B, approval of the minutes of the City Council study session of May... Okay. On the consent agenda, A, approval of the minutes of the City Council meeting of May seven, two thousand eighteen; B, approval of the minutes of the City Council study session of May fourteen, two thousand eighteen; C, motion number two thousand eighteen dash twenty-seven, authorizing the execution of a memorandum of agreement with the Rotary Club of Lakewood relative to the Fort Stellikum Park Pavilion; D, items filed in the office of the city clerk includes, one, planning commission meeting minutes of April eighteen, two thousand eighteen; two, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of April five, two thousand eighteen; three, Lakewood Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting minutes of March twenty, two thousand eighteen; and four, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of April two, two thousand eighteen.
Is there any item which any member of the council wishes to have removed from the consent agenda? Hearing that, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Mr. Simpson. Second by Ms. Moss, so we adopt the consent agenda. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to the motion which has been added to the agenda. Do you have that, Madam Clerk, or should I read it?
To authorize the filing of a declaratory action regarding adult family home businesses.
Ms. Walker, City Attorney.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. My name's Heidi Walker. I'm the City Attorney for the City of Lakewood, Washington. I typically go pretty quickly with you, but I'm going to spend a little time on this one because there's a real history here. This council didn't wake up last week and say, hey, get something on the agenda about adult family homes. That is not the way this came down. And the notion that we haven't been making some efforts at the lower level is absurd. It is patently absurd. Debate around whether the people of the city of Lakewood are intolerant of adult family homes or the state of Washington is ignoring the laws that regulate them, that debate really took a hit when last fall, the city had to subordinate the business of the service to our citizens to protect those citizens from a diagnosed psychotic killer with a prognosis for reoffense from residents in an adult family home. Such homes, by definition, are not built, staffed, or located to serve violent predatory populations. Perhaps the problem is not the attitude of our citizens. In November, we requested documents from the state of Washington in order to explore options and educate ourselves. We have received some, but not all of our requested documents have been produced. Perhaps the problem is not the attitude of our citizens. Meanwhile, our manager has reached out to legislators and other state officials. We have testified to the legislature. To date, some city officials allege we have not made the effort, some city officials have said that we have made the effort to resolve this at a lower level, while state officials suggest that we have not. We have not received so much as an acknowledgement that the intended placement of a psychotic killer or the placement of four registered sex offenders in one home is a cause for concern. We haven't even gotten that level of acknowledgement at this point, nine months later. And now, this nine months later, nothing changes. And this council is faced with adopting ordinances in an area that they are told they can't regulate or sue the state to force adherence with the laws designed to protect a vulnerable population. The piece that's getting ignored here is that these homes are intended for a vulnerable population and currently are being used to co-locate a predatory population in a residential neighborhood, and that has been completely overlooked in our conversations with the state. The problem is not the attitude of the citizens of Lakewood. The city has drafted a complaint for writ of mandamus and declaratory and injunctive relief. We have provided a copy of this to the state. We have been in discussions with the state. They have not done equitable distribution of these homes in Pierce County. In Pierce County, we represent seven percent of the population, and we have twenty-nine percent of the adult family homes. This is in violation of the Growth Management Act. We believe that in bringing this writ, we will be able to get the discovery that we haven't been able to get through public records and be able to put these homes back on the footing that they were intended to be. They are intended to serve vulnerable populations in a residential setting, and we are asking for the council's authorization to do that. I would be happy to answer any questions, and I want to take credit for this because it's really well-written, but Eileen McCain, who drafted it, is actually here tonight, and she can address real meaty questions if you've had a chance to read it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Walker, or?
I'll come back if I have to.
Entertain the motion. It's all moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Whalen and seconded by Mr. Branstadter that we adopt a motion as stated to file a declaratory action against the Washington State Department of Social Health Services at all. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually appreciate DSHS sent us a memo last week, a nasty gram threatening us, but on there, they had adult family home ratios per ten thousand people, and actually, interestingly enough, Lakewood is fifth, although rising because we're at eighty-one homes, thirteen point nine homes per ten thousand people. But on the bottom, you would see that Seattle, politically powerful Seattle, is at two per ten thousand people. And Spokane, the second-largest city in the state, is at two point five. Tacoma is at two point seven. So apparently, they don't have, I mean, we're told this vulnerable population doesn't have anywhere to go, but Lakewood seems to have people with disabilities in our age that these other larger cities apparently... I was trying to get back to one. Oh, there you go. So, you know, there's two ways, and I'm reading this book, The Color of Law, and it's a very good book, and I recommend it. It's all about how African-Americans were denied ability for homeownership throughout the twentieth century, but especially pre-nineteen sixties. Along that, there were restrictions, there were deed restrictions that were found by courts and later by law to be illegal. But they also, local governments used, and state governments and the federal government used various administrative actions to try to encourage African-Americans to move into areas where there are already African-Americans. And what the DSHS numbers show us is the likelihood of having a new adult family home in your neighborhood increases if you already have adult family homes. Cities that don't have many adult family homes don't have many adult, aren't getting any new adult family homes. The number in Shoreline, Linwood, Des Moines, Mount Lake Terrace, and Lakewood, who make up just a small part of the population, I don't even think together they even meet Spokane's population, yet they have like something like close to fifteen percent of the total adult family homes. Together, they make up well less than one percent of the total population of the state. So they're clearly concentrating these things. People from Olympia are here tonight, five point two adult family homes per ten thousand people. There's got to be disabled people in Olympia. And so just wanted to point that out, that in Pierce County, Gig Harbor, Bonnie Lake, and Dupont aren't even mentioned on the list. They don't even make the list, right? They're not even, so I guess either they don't have any, or they have so few that it goes below Seattle, which is two, and at the bottom of the list. So clearly, there's no effort by DSHS to make sure that these things are in different geographic areas of the state. I mean, there's just absolutely no effort. And so I would point out that actually, DSHS is encouraging, if not outright, working on and abetting the concentration of these items. So you're concentrating disabled people into certain communities. That is the goal of the state of Washington through their actions on a daily basis. And so in the industry itself, we learned in the Butterfield case that the industry itself is amoral, that it showed us that if they get paid enough, they're going to take anybody. The resident and employee safety is always going to be second to the need to make money. They're going to bring in more and more of these folks. And I would point out that a vulnerable population, most of these folks who are still in adult family homes are vulnerable. And this move now to bring in sex offenders and violent individuals like Mr. Butterfield is, and then for DSHS to infer in their letters to us that they're somehow a protected class is a grotesque bastardization of disability laws, to use them to potentially inflict harm on disabled people. My mom, your mom, a disabled child. So now DSHS says, wow, these guys are fine. Well, it's not their mother, it's not their father, and it's not their disabled child. These laws, we've now, we're getting comments from folks in the disability community that turn these laws around a hundred and eighty degrees and use those same laws that were designed to protect people with disabilities to now potentially endanger them. And that's just crazy, but this is why we're here tonight. The industry is not going to represent the residents, the employees, or the neighbors in this community. DSHS is a captive regulator. They're the definition of a captive regulator. They regulate these things very lightly, by the way. If you look at a Seattle Times article back a few years ago, excellent article about how, what a lax job DSHS does on that side. Well, they have every incentive not to be too tough, too tough of a regulator, because at the same time, they need to move the merchandise out of places like Western State. So that's why we're here. At the end of the day, the city of Lakewood is the only one standing in protection of vulnerable people in this community. It's not the other way around. It's this way, because DSHS doesn't give a rip. The industry needs to make money, and I respect that. And so no one except for the city of Lakewood is watching out for the residents, employees, or neighbors, and I urge passage of this measure tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I support the motion authorizing the initiation of legal action against DSHS. I regret that it's come to this after almost two years of recognizing that there is a concern that needs to be addressed, and I, like I think most of the rest of us, came to this issue about, we don't really, we know there's a problem, that we're concerned about the residents of homes, we're concerned about the neighbors around homes, we're concerned about the people that work in them, but that in order to craft a solution or to reassure ourselves, we need some information. We need to know what is going on. ourselves, we need some information, we need to know what is going on, and that instead we have gotten that it's none of your business response to be able to go and do that. And we went through that, and then we went for an entire legislative session where our legislators from the 28th District attempted to implement legislation that would help us gather information and re-inform the rules around adult family homes. They weren't able to get that legislation passed, despite their best efforts. And just recently, discussions in a variety of veins have brought us to the point of where reluctantly, I think we're going to have to go and ask the courts, to ask the regulators at DSHS to give us the information so that we can make good decisions for our community, for the residents in immediate proximity to adult family homes, to the residents of adult family homes, and even to the operators of adult family homes who are under pressure from DSHS to take whomever. Hopefully, this legal action will result in getting us some information that will allow us, in a reasonably short period of time, to determine the appropriate role for the city to ensure safety and the well-being of everyone involved. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with what my two colleagues have said with regard to the declaratory action that the city is going to vote on here momentarily, and I would like to add something to what Councilmember Bulkey said. He said, and I quote, "We stand up for the vulnerable," and we do. In the public hearing that we had here several weeks ago, and in this evening, we have heard it over and over and over, how the city and the people in Oak Brook welcome adult family homes, because they do believe in the concept. That said, we also stand up for our citizens. And it seems to me that we are disingenuous when we use the word "disingenuous." DSHS has been dishonest, not only to this council, not only to this city, but to you people out there and to the people in the Oak Brook neighborhood. There was a speaker here not long ago by the name of Sorenson, I believe I'm making eye contact with him right now, and he said, quote, "DSHS has to be told no. I'm voting yes on this, on both this declaratory action and ordinance 682, because it's about time we said no." Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whalen.
If I can get the microphone to work. I'm going to vote in favor of proceeding with the legal action, principally because of what members of the public have mentioned tonight. The adult family home ordinance is well ensconced in both, you know, state and federal law with the Americans with Disabilities Act and the Federal Housing Act, and as I believe Mr. Lord indicated, the experience should be enriching. The problem is that the experience has not been enriching for some potential residents who may have suffered harm at the hands of an inappropriate person being placed in an adult family home, and really at the hands of the neighborhood, who frankly have been struggling this for many, many years. What this is not about, it's not about restricting access to proper adult family home facilities for those with disabilities. In fact, it is all about supporting those with disabilities and those who have functional limitations to be in adult family home facility that's safe and appropriate with appropriate staffing. What the lawsuit is about, it's about seeking court review and intervention as to what is a fair and balanced approach to communities that have dealt with multi-county planning policies and state agencies who have been part and parcel to developing those policies but have yet to fully comply with those policies. This lawsuit is about having a court review whether or not the state has violated the Growth Management Act or applicable county-wide planning policies to the point where it has created a problem, not only for the community, but for the adult family home industry at large. I am hopeful that the litigation will bring some answers to the legal questions that will satisfy both the industry and the community. And because of that, I'm going to support the litigation, because I think it's high time, after nine years on the council, that we get some answers that we have been seeking for many, many years.
Ms. Moss.
I totally agree with my colleagues. The one thing that I have been concerned with is that we have been silent about what happens in our neighborhoods and listening to our residents and our citizens far too long, and now we have become pretty much a dumping ground. And no one, no one has more passion for veterans than I do. I would not want to see any veteran put in any organization that's going to create harm to them. I will vote for this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Like Mr. Whalen said more eloquently, this isn't about banning, stopping people from having care in a properly functioning adult family home. The lawsuit doesn't seek the stoppage of any adult family home operated under the law. It seeks to have the state of Washington and DSHS follow the laws and regulations as intended so that people have safe care for those who are the most vulnerable. I'd like to address one insidious attack on the city of council from representatives of the adult family home industry who don't have the courage to stand up and say this in front of you. On more than one occasion, we have been accused of being racist for considering this ordinance. Until a couple of weeks ago, I had no idea what any of the faces of adult family home operators looked like, so that was particularly offensive to me personally. Right now, in our very diverse community of Lakewood, I think it's something that needs to be brought to the forefront. I'm not originally from here, though I've been here for many, many years. I was from a mill town, and my daddy taught me that you had to stand up to bullies. And whether it's DSHS or the association, I feel we have bullies. We just lost Dr. Claudia Thomas, an icon in this community, African-American woman, and if anybody suffered discrimination coming out of the Jim Crow South over 85 years ago, it was Claudia. Claudia held her head high, contributed to society at every level. She served with her husband as military spouse overseas, teaching in Japan, and suffered true discrimination in a newly-integrated armed force. She came to Lakewood. She had difficulty in unincorporated Pierce County finding a home in the area where she wanted to live, and in her waning years, when she needed it most, she was in an adult family home in Oak Brook. I'm voting for this to protect Claudia Thomas and your grandmother and my grandmother and my children's grandmother when they need that assistance. Injecting sex offenders and violent criminals into a residential neighborhood was never the idea of the authors of this legislation. It's an abomination from the administration by DSHS and its failure to properly regulate this industry. So somebody has to stand up, and it happens to be us.
Any further comments? A call for a vote, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. We now move to ordinance number 682, which has been continued from the meeting of May 7. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 682, continued from the meeting of May 7, 2018, establishing a moratorium on the filing of applications for licenses, permits, and approvals for adult family home, group home, enhanced service facility, or comparable businesses in residential zones for a period of six months.
Ms. Walker.
City Attorney for the city of Lakewood, and I must have been very excited about our opportunity for that litigation, because you have a replacement moratorium in front of you. The only things that have really changed are the dates on it. What happened was I rolled forward what you had previously considered, and I didn't update it. And the place that that makes a difference is Section 3 of the proposed ordinance. When you pass a moratorium initially, you are required to set a public hearing and make findings once it's passed, and that public hearing would actually be on the 4th of June, should you choose to adopt the moratorium. In our legal action that you've adopted, we are seeking a moratorium for the court to place on the state for licensing these facilities, and the origination of licenses comes from the state for adult family homes. So this would be a moratorium to the effect that we can impose it on the things that the city would issue in the way of licenses or permits. I would be happy to try and answer any questions you may have.
Questions from Ms. Walker and Mr. Branstadter.
Ms. Walker, I have a question about the Section 3 that's been inserted, and I'm just trying to determine if I have the right copy. I have a request for council action, and it sort of starts on page 36, and it has a Section 3 in it.
At each of your places, you have received a paper-clipped cover sheet request for council action appended to a stapled ordinance number 682, which will mirror what you received in your packet, except that it has been updated. And I apologize, that was exclusively my responsibility, and I did not put my ball for that, but I wanted to make sure you had the proper copy tonight.
Okay, my colleague has handed me a copy of your updated Section 3, where the wording that was confusing me has changed, and so I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all. Ms. Mayor.
Mr. Whalen.
Ms. Walker, a quick question for you on the legal impact or need for a moratorium, given that we've just given you authority to file the lawsuit, which has as part of its request for relief, motion or request for injunctive relief restraining the various defendants, not the individual owners, obviously, but the state of Washington, DSHS, et cetera, et cetera, from hosting, placing, or facilitating the placement of those we're most concerned about, those who have a history of violence or predation in adult family homes, and from the defendants from converting adult family homes into enhanced services facilities, which has been one of our major concerns. Why not move for a temporary restraining order followed by a preliminary injunction as opposed to a moratorium?
I'm calling on Ms. McCain as the person who's been drafting the litigation that we're proposing.
Thank you, councilmembers. Eileen McCain, Assistant City Attorney. And Mr. Whalen, effectively, we are asking for that in the legal action. We will be asking for injunctive relief from the court. The idea, as Ms. Walker already explained, is that the city really has no regulatory authority over adult family homes. That field has been taken almost exclusively by the state, and I say almost exclusively because they do give us some work to do. They have our inspectors inspect and approve the homes according to the International Residential Code, but we really have no regulatory effect or impact on adult family homes. What we're asking for from the court, then, is relief in a real way, real impact on DSHS and these adult family homes, saying that DSHS has, as you've all explained, expanded the definition of residence and have allowed ineligible residents in adult family homes. They have not revoked or suspended those adult family home licenses, and they should. They haven't equitably distributed the essential public facilities as required on the Growth Management Act as they should, and they have no real response to any of those allegations.
What would a six-month moratoria do for you as a tool in litigation that you don't otherwise have?
It would look like belts and suspenders. I would be going in with inconsistent legal theories, and I suppose it would express the frustration of this council, but it would do little more than that.
Anything further? Entertained a motion? So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Ms. Barth, that we adopt ordinance number 683, excuse me, 682. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. We now move to ordinance number 683. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance number 683, creating Chapter 18A.04 of the Lakewood Municipal Code relative to prohibiting the production, processing, and retail sales of marijuana.
This, we have Mr. Buer.
Mayor, members of the council, the first ordinance again is ordinance 683. This would prohibit the production, processing, and retail sales of marijuana in the city of Lakewood. This ordinance represents the recommendation of the Planning Commission, who had previously considered the item in January and February of 2018. Both the commission and city council have conducted public hearings on marijuana. I believe you're fairly familiar with this subject. With that, I'll close my remarks on this particular ordinance.
Questions for Mr. Buer.
I do have a question.
Mr. Whalen.
Mr. Buer, if you know, how many cities as of 2018 have elected to ban retail sales within their jurisdiction? I know by a particular study as of June of 2016, 54 of 142 cities with populations over 3,000 had actually made votes to ban retail sales in their jurisdictions.
I don't have the numbers for 2018, Mr. Whalen.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Buer? Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Ms. Barth, that we adopt motion number 683. Is there further discussion? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm in favor of adopting this ordinance for a number of reasons. One, this ordinance is, in fact, the status quo, that since I 502 passed, at that time there was some discussion as to whether we should consider an action such as this at that time, and it was noted that we had prior to that, that we had, within our business licensing code, provisions that would not allow for retail sales because of the illegality of such activity under federal law. Since then, we've arrived here today because we have been encouraged to do something more definitive rather than keeping the issue percolating and going on. But it remains that retail sales of marijuana are criminal enterprises under federal law. Even if we allow them, that will remain the case. Even if we allow them, that will remain the case. We will place our police department in the position of actively supporting businesses that we've licensed while still expecting them to aggressively pursue others who are involved in the same activity. That's somewhat the pattern that you would find in some third-world countries. We have worked really diligently to craft a vision for our city and for our community. I look at bringing and authorizing retail marijuana sales and compare it against that vision, and do not see how that advances it. And in fact, I have concerns that it may, in fact, degrade it. The one certainty that I am sure that authorizing retail sales in Lakewood, and the appearance that they're condoned by the city and that there are nothing wrong with them, is it is definitely going to increase the number of individuals who are users of cannabis in the city. You know, opening new sales is just not going to cause a migration of people who are already buying in Tacoma or someone to come here. Businesses that open are going to engage in marketing, they're going to see to try to attract new customers, and those new customers are going to be in our community. We heard from advocates of saying, "We should allow these businesses to open because we allow other nefarious businesses to operate." And nefarious is not my word. Nefarious is their word that they use to describe their businesses and ask us to say, "Well, you're letting these other things go on," which are some things that we've done what we can to limit control and being able to go and do, but to the extent that we can. But that seems to be a poor reason for us to move forward and approve establishing retail businesses in the City of Lakewood. We have worked at looking at overcoming reputation for our city that dates back to before incorporation with respect to safety and lawfulness. Our city is safer, much more well-protected than it was then, but that reputation lags reality. Moving forward and establishing retail marijuana businesses, particularly if we are going to place them along the I-5 corridor, where when you look at where retail marijuana businesses are between Lacey and Federal Way, we would end up with the retail businesses that have the most easy on-off access to I-5 of any of the existing businesses that are now there. And then we hear the question about money. Well, money just is not a good short-term reason to deal with something that has some long-term negatives to it. And lastly, I guess that I would address, because I've given it a good deal of effort in terms of talking to people and finding it to do, about what did the yes majority for I-502 mean? Well, certainly, I-502 didn't say, didn't mention Lakewood. It didn't mention would every community in the state have to allow these businesses? It spoke most clearly about decriminalization, something that I believe is widely supported even amongst people who did not vote yes on I-502. And the decriminalization elements of I-502 have been embedded in the work of our court system, in our police department, in our legal department, and prosecutors. But in the end, I-502, what citizens voted for is tonight. I-502 created a situation where individual communities could decide whether having retail marijuana sales is in their best interest or not. And so I think that the action that we take, and the fact that we are taking action, okay, is fully consistent with I-502. I for one care about the constant discussions at the federal level about changing the status of cannabis. And I'm satisfied that those discussions are being done by people who know the science and people who are involved in the protection of public health and being able to go and do that. And certainly, I'm open to reconsidering, should they come to a conclusion that is different than the current conclusion that they have made, that in their review since I-502 passed, that they have affirmed, and that. It certainly is not establishing businesses now doesn't preclude us that if that status changes at the federal level, to then move forward. The opposite is not true. If we allow them now and nothing ever changes, we're not, with respect to the scientific and the regulatory effort at the federal level, you know, we'll just be going off. And, you know, like other citizens, I had a chance to vote on I-502. You know, I had no particular knowledge that allows me to really assess that aspect of it, that I agree that criminalization could be downgraded to something else, that I would have liked if the state legislature had thought that the I-502 distribution of funds that were going to come from marijuana revenue would remain as the voter said, but the legislature has done away with that because they disagreed with that portion of it. So, you know, I don't think the time is right for Lakewood to give the go-ahead to open retail marijuana stores. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Whalen.
Thank you very much. As many of you know, this issue is on our agenda tonight because many moons ago, a couple of us said, "We need to get this on the council's agenda, have a conversation about marijuana now that I-502 has passed and the industry has somewhat matured." So I was one in favor of getting it on our agenda and having a full and fair conversation in the community and through the Planning Commission about the subject. And I think we've had that. And six months ago, when we started this enterprise, I was probably one in favor of allowing retail sales in Lakewood principally at the time because we had some pressure at the state legislative level that was going to say, "Those communities, including Lakewood, who don't poop or get off the pot, so to speak, by either allowing it or banning it, as opposed to hiding behind your business licensing code, we are going to cut your liquor revenues by a certain extent unless you make a decision." So I said, "Well, let's get it on the council to make a decision." Since that time, I have come to change my view. And I am going to vote to support ordinance 683 to ban retail sales in Lakewood, and here's why. We know that I-502 authorized a licensed production and sale of marijuana, as well as legalizing the limited adult possession and private use of marijuana. And I think that's well and good for many of the policy reasons that were articulated around the state at the time it came to a public vote. I think illicit drug activity and criminal activity have decreased. There's been limited studies as to the increase of youth with regard to legalized marijuana. So I think all of those things have been out there and studied to some degree. But I'm concerned for several reasons. While the Liquor and Cannabis Control Board has allotted retailer licenses for each city and county, initially capped at 334, they raised their state cap of retail licenses to 556. Lakewood was allotted two retail licenses, but given the state's past history, there's no guarantee that that cap would remain at two. And we could be subject to four or six or, you know, with the adult family home situation, we've seen how the escalations happen at the hands of the state. We've taken a wait-and-see approach. We've relied on our business licensing code to preclude the licensing of businesses not in compliance with state, local, or federal law. But we have also learned through this process that city and county governments can and have enacted their own policies regarding regulation of licensed cannabis businesses. In January of 2014, the Attorney General for the State of Washington released a memo confirming that local jurisdictions may regulate and/or ban I-502-related businesses. And that is despite the vote that happened at the statewide level, local jurisdictions still have zoning control and authority. In March of 2018, Division 2 of our own Court of Appeals decided a case called Emerald Enterprises versus Clark County, which upheld the Clark County ordinance which banned retail sales. So as the industry has matured, so has the legal climate, authorizing and allowing cities to kind of take control of their own destiny, which was a little murky at the time when we initially started this conversation. The issue with regard to access, people are concerned or have expressed concern about, doggone it, you know, the City of Lakewood was among many other residents throughout the state that voted for it, they should be given legal access and the right to have limited adult possession and use of marijuana. Well, that is true. But I will tell you that despite Lakewood's pseudo-ban, total monthly retail cannabis sales have climbed from $40 million in 2014 to over 437 million in the first half of 2017. Pierce County sales, sales within the county, have increased from $4 million in 2014 to over 51 million in 2017. So access to legalized marijuana has not been a problem for those who want to get it, regardless of Lakewood's stance thus far. So for me, it's never been about chasing tax revenues. The money that likely would be generated by legalizing retail sales in Lakewood is simply, in my opinion, not enough to worry about. I have been concerned about the community image, as we have had these meetings with Lakewood United and the school district and other business owners and others throughout our city, as they've commented to the Planning Commission. And so my vote no to ban is based in part on the school district and their pronouncement that they do not believe that this is an appropriate policy for the City of Lakewood to pursue. I have given much weight to the Planning Commission's vote, which came out against legalizing retail sales in the City of Lakewood. And principally, the commentary and the comment we received from the Planning Commission that when they went out and talked to certain owners in the areas where retail sales stores might be located, those owners weren't very excited about having those stores near their facility, principally, I believe, because of the fact that they have spent, like we have, many years of moving the needle forward to increase and improve Lakewood's image and their image of their own business. So our emphasis and collaboration to support youth is growing. I support the school district's endeavor in that regard. Our businesses are expanding, our streetscapes and street frontages are improving. To what end? Retail shops give us limited benefit, and in my opinion, community image and the various other reasons I've articulated trumps over the limited financial benefits. I would vote no at this time.
Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My colleagues, Councilmember Branstadter and Deputy Mayor Whalen, are good men who speak good words, and I reluctantly disagree with both of them. I will oppose ordinance 683, and my reasoning is as follows. We had a public hearing here not long ago in which a Mr. Chris Kaufman spoke to us. And if I recall correctly, Mr. Kaufman, you stated that you voted in favor of Initiative I-502, but have since changed your mind. Okay, where am I? Correct me if I'm wrong. Go ahead.
I made the point that voting for I-502 was a separate and separate issue from having pot shops in Lakewood.
Okay. That's right. That's right. You did say that. But at the end of your comment, you said, "This is, after all, a democracy," which is something you do not find in third-world countries and which does adhere to majority rule. Now, this is a concept in American history that goes back long before the Constitution. We are a people who base our decisions on majority rule. In fact, you are going to witness that this evening. This council is going to vote on this ordinance 683. It will be a majority rule that determines what we are going to do. Now, this is what I wrote to myself this afternoon, as I try to get my mind around this concept of majority rule. The concept of majority rule is one that this council follows. It seems disconcerting to me that we would not honor the concept of majority rule to those who voted in favor of Initiative I-502, which I remind my audience was 54% of the people in this city, 57% of the people in Pierce County, and 57% of the people in Washington State. Are we going to tell those people that we're just going to simply overturn that because we decide that because of our majority rule, we can overrule yours? I do not believe that that is my job. So that is the first reason why I am opposed to this ordinance. The second reason I oppose it comes down to money. Now, we've heard a lot of talk about money, and my colleague, Mr. Whalen, has spoken about image, and I agree with him. The city is not chasing dollars. That is not what we do. And it is dishonest for people to suggest that that is what we do. And the city does not go out to line its pockets, like I've read in certain publications. The city raises funds to provide services for you, period. And we're going to sit here tonight, and we're going to say, "We're going to turn up our noses at the opportunity from the sales tax and the revenues derived therefrom, to we're going to turn that down?" This may be a rounding-up error for some. It could be seed money for a program that prevents bullying in the Clover Park School District. So I would be very careful in saying no to what some call pennies on the dollar. Those pennies may be lifesavers. Those pennies may put streetlights in Oak Brook. Those pennies may put better sidewalks around the city. As my father used to say, "Money isn't everything, but it sure is nice to have." So if I'm going to be accused of being one of those economic determinists, go right ahead and call me that. But I'm going to vote, I oppose this ordinance because, A, I believe in majority rule, and not every one of those 54% are dopers or psychotic. And I do believe that we are foolish to leave money, whatever amount it is, on the table. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Barth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I so appreciate this council. I think everyone on this council... I think everyone on this council takes a look at the things that are presented to us. We research it. We listen. We're open-minded. And I've really tried to be open-minded about the marijuana issue. And I have been swayed back and forth, and I love your idea of concept, and I can't get past one concept. Well, two. Image.
One or three.
Two or three. Image, I think, is a huge thing that we all have a concern about, the image of our community. But where I really stumble is when I was first elected to office, and this is going to sound kind of corny, but it's me. I raised my right hand when I was sworn in, and I promised to uphold the local, state, and federal law. I can't get past that. I'd be most happy to relook at this if the federal law changes, but right now, I'm going to say I'm going to support the Ordinance 683.
This is difficult. I've heard the arguments over the months, and I agree with many of them, some from At the bottom, the bottom line of the consideration is that I believe that this is not a democracy. It's a republic. And under the laws of the republic, as an elected official, I think it is my duty to make the best decision for the constituency at the time the decision is made, to somewhat, saying sometimes irrespective of the majority, because the majority can wreck tyranny. Not that this would be tyranny, but I still believe it's your duty to make the best judgment. Looking at it, I don't see a net advantage to the City of Lakewood in having, all things considered, in having retail marijuana shops. And like Ms. Barth, I'm a little bit stuck on the fact that 40 years ago, this month as a matter of fact, I graduated from law school, and I took out oath to pass, when I passed the bar, to support and defend the Constitution. And a day later, I was actually recommissioned in the Navy, and I took, I think that was the second time I took a Navy oath to uphold and defend the Constitution of the United States. And we're a nation of laws, not men. Unlike Sacramento, we really can't have a City of Lakewood's immigration policy. We can't have import regulations unique to a city or a state. As much as we would like to, the City of, the State of Washington can't pass an initiative saying nobody else from California can move up here, because the Constitution doesn't allow those things, and it's not up to us to change that. I think there needs to be change in marijuana laws in the United States. I think personally, I believe it's classified improperly under federal law with drugs that are too harsh. I'm not convinced it shouldn't be a controlled substance. I believe there are medical applications. I believe that should go through the FDA, through testing and licensing and prescriptions like other controlled substances. So there's a need for change, but the need for change needs to be at the federal level. I can't support, whether it's the state or city, being rogue to the Constitution. So to those of you who support it, I say, talk to your congressman. They're the ones who need to change things. But for now and for Lakewood, I'm going to vote yes. Any further comments? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay.
Nay.
Roll call.
Councilmember Bokey. Councilmember Branstadter.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Nay.
Councilmember Simpson. Deputy Mayor Whalen.
Aye.
Councilmember Barth.
Aye.
Mayor Anderson.
Aye.
The ayes have it, four to three.
Since the ordinance passed, let's entertain a motion to strike consideration of Ordinance Number 684 and 685 from the agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. It's easier than going through and not getting a second. We now move to Ordinance Number 686. Madam Clerk.
It's Number 686, adopting the 2017 through 18 biennial budget amendments.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This item was presented to you on April 23, as well as at the public hearing on May 7, and I have no further updates. The information that is in the proposed ordinance is the same as presented previously.
Questions for Ms. Kraus. Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Kraus, I just, it is, there are a number of adjustments in here, and I just want you to point out that in the general fund increases, it's about $2.5 million next year, but about two-thirds of that, in my thinking, almost $1.7 million is going to various capital projects. So could you discuss some of the capital projects, especially in roads and parks, that were, I should have probably given you more. I don't know what page that's on, but...
Sure.
Discuss some of the projects that we're doing with this money?
Sure.
You just want me to talk about it? Several gateway projects?
Okay, let me get to that section of it. So in the general fund, we have about $875,000 that is going into the park CIP. These projects include the Springbrook Park Expansion Phase II, and that's about $40,000, just rounded numbers, $27,000 for Wahop Lake Trail and Deck and Dock, about $80,000 for the Chambers Creek Trail Planning, $50,000 for gateways, $50,000 for Fort Stilliken Park Sportsfield Improvements, about $109,000 for Springbrook Park Acquisition, $200,000 for Fort Stilliken Park Utility Improvements, and about $320,000 for Fort Stilliken Park And on, let me see. For the Transportation CIP, there is about $221,000, and that's $27,000 for some minor capital and major maintenance, $126,000 for South Tacoma to Stilliken Boulevard to 88th Street, $29,000 for Stilliken Boulevard Far West Drive to Phillips Road for design, and $38,000 for the roadway safety at 96th and 40th, $300,000 for Lakewood Drive and Flet Creek to 74th.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to point out that a lot of what's going on here, and we had a very good year financially last year because of good revenues and cost containment, but that these expenditures, a lot of them are going towards, both from the general fund side, which is a positive thing, but also real estate excise tax numbers are up, and those numbers are going towards, by law, they have to go to capital items. So we're increasing our expenditures on our basic infrastructure and parks, and I just wanted to point that out, that there's some real positives in this budget. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from Ms. Kraus? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had a couple of items I had a question on, and I'm on page 122 of my packet, where there is a discussion about transfers to the Transportation CIP in order to be able to move forward with a number of projects. And it says transfers totaling $220,641 to the Transportation CIP. And then there's an itemized listing that is $400,000 and some thousand dollars worth of items. And I'm, could you help me reconcile that?
Yes. I apologize for that. That is an error. The transfers totaling $220,000, that's the number, that's an error. The numbers beneath it are the numbers that are being transferred over, and that should be, and I apologize for that.
Okay, so, and each of those items that's listed there is something that although this is a biennial, you know, a budget adjustment, these were things that were in the capital improvement program at the beginning of the biennium?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Able to go and do that.
The total for that is $520,000. That's going from the general fund to the Transportation CIP.
And then, could you speak briefly to the process of where most, the vast majority of the dollars that were approving to move are carry-forward dollars that were there, they were envisioned, they're just trying to get them into the right year where we're going to spend them. But that there were, particularly in the real estate excise tax, there were dollars that were not envisioned, that were above the estimate when we started the biennium. And here, there is some allocation about how to spend those dollars primarily for capital expenditures, but could you, but we didn't really redo the CIP. So could you discuss how the decision was made to spend that $600,000, I think it's about $600,000 and some thousand dollars of, some of that was new money? And that, you know, to what extent was it that we needed more money in certain projects because the costs went up? Or was there a process to do some new things that were determined either because there was an emergency or someone decided to?
Sure. So on the real estate excise tax, the total transportation to CIP is $339,000. It's actually higher than that by another $275,000, but we had some transportation benefit district projects that we basically came in more with transportation benefit district funds. So we reversed some of the transfers from the real estate excise tax to free up some dollars for some other non-TBD projects. The reasons for these increases are due to what you had said. There has been some cost increases, and there have been projects where either the scope increased because it made more sense to do another component with that project. So those items were included. These items were vetted through with the city manager, so a lot of the projects where the scope increased or there was some additional work to be done. It was just much more cost-effective, knowing that if we were going to be doing that project anyways, it would make sense to include it, the additional component.
When we began and approved the original biennial budget, we had targeted fund balances for the various categories of reserves, which were defined in terms of percentages of the city's budgets and revenue. And as we had things such as sales tax, real estate excise tax, other revenues that came in higher than expected, does this adjustment proportionally shift some dollars to maintain those percentages in those reserve accounts?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Don't believe we've had a motion yet, have we?
No, we have not.
Let's entertain a motion. Second. It's been moved by Mr. Whalen, seconded by Mr. Branstadter, who adopt Ordinance Number 686. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Whalen?
I just want to, just want to speak. I just want to thank staff and Ms. Kraus for putting together the report. It's excellent. I think it's a tremendous reflection on the good financial stewardship of the city through the city manager and staff. I do want to just point out that sometimes people see that $6 million figure, and they think we've made an extra $6 million year-over-year. Again, of the general fund money's increase, it was $610,000 approximately. The rest are special project funds and the like. So I just want to confirm that, because sometimes people see that $6 million figure overall and think we've had this massive increase in the general fund, which is not accurate. Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'd also like to commend staff, particularly Ms. Kraus, for putting together a very transparent presentation in keeping with council's priorities, and also noting staff's alignment of its recommendations with this council's practice of always trying to use one-time money for one-time capital improvements instead of mortgaging your children's future, trying to build something that they can use. So a different concept than some, but we seem to be fairly consistently on that path, and we appreciate having that come in the form of staff recommendations for these changes. All in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. We now move to Ordinance Number 687. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance Number 687, amending Chapter 3.38 of the Lakewood Municipal Code relative to service water management fees.
For this, we have Mr. Vigorin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. We've been before you a number of times the last few months to review the stormwater rates for the city and determine that we recommended to increase them to meet the future needs of the utility. We met last week, and you reviewed the ordinance at that time. We've made a couple of changes based on the last meeting to phase in charging the stormwater fee to the nonprofit parcels over a five-year period, and that would start at 20% in 2019 and top out at 100% of the rate in 2023. We also added in language to reduce the maximum credit over a five-year period, also starting in 2019. So for, if the person was receiving an 85% credit currently, it would be reduced by 8.4% over that same five-year period and be down to the 43% rate in 2023. So those are changes that we made since we last met, and I can entertain any questions you might have.
Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Real quick, Mr. Vigorin, what's the fiscal note on this? So in 20, in 2019, what are we looking at for additional revenue?
It's about approximately $1.3 million.
What do we bring in now?
A total of about $2.7.
Thank you. Any other questions? Entertained a motion?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's been moved by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Ms. Barth, that we adopt motion Number 687. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Motion carries. We now move to any, two unfinished businesses. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council?
There is none, Mayor.
Is there any new business to come before the council?
No, Mayor.
And we moved reports by the city manager. Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to call up Mr. Dave Buwer, like to give you an update on a update to our fee schedule that, actually, I would just define as a housekeeping amendment based on some legislation that the state legislature passed during the last session.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the state legislature in 2018 increased building permit fees to support the State Building Code Council. And you have a copy of the legislation attached to the memo at the very end of your council packet. The current fee is $4.50 for each building permit issued plus an additional surcharge of $2 per building permit for each residential unit over one. And then the new fee is slightly structured different. That's an increase going from 450 to 650 plus a surcharge of $2 for each residential unit. And then the commercial building permits go to $25 plus an additional surcharge of $2 for each additional residential unit of the first unit. And again, this is to support the State Building Code Council, who submits to the legislature code amendments for consideration every couple of years. As a result of this legislation, we're asking the city council to go ahead and let us amend the master fee schedule accordingly and then introduce these new fees into the permitting system. We would bring this back at your next city council meeting as an amendment to the master fee schedule under the consent calendar. That's all I have.
Questions for Mr. Buhr? Mr. Whelan?
That's just a pass through. We're not adding on anything else on top of it.
It's not a, it is, excuse me, it is no pass-through. It's just they're increasing the fees. We're moving it on, we are passing along to the contractor developer. I didn't say that right. I'm a little discombobulated this evening. Excuse me.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Mayor. And we'll bring that back for council consideration at, I think, your next regular meeting. A few updates. Just wanted to let the council know that Pierce County Flood Control District is seeking applications from various cities to, if they want to utilize their opportunity funds. The city, we, over the last five or six years, we've accumulated over $300,000. And so last week, we submitted a letter to request about 250,000 of those dollars to move forward with alum treatment on Wahop Lake, which the council provided direction to us last fall. From a timeline standpoint, if the district does approve the allocation of those funds for this project, we'll move forward with, you know, during the design and the permitting process of that in 2018. And then in early 2019, about the springtime, we would proceed with the actual treatment. And so as that moves forward, we'll certainly keep the council appraised. SSMCP last week, in partnership with the Pierce County Library District, as well as the Timberland Library District down in Thurston County, initiated a program called Resource Kits for Those in Needs. And the purpose of the kits is to provide information that better connects military-affiliated and non-military affiliated, you know, organizations and residents with services that they, that they might need. It's a very, very unique, unique program. And I just want to compliment, actually, Sarah Luna, who is our SSMCP coordinator with spearheading this. And so that has kicked off last week. And again, want to thank the libraries for being a resource and helping out with this as well. You may have heard that Pierce County is moving forward on a new program that goes by the acronym of HELP, Homeless Empowerment Labor Project. And the Pierce County Council has allocated $200,000 to this program. The purpose of the program, it's actually modeled off of the city of Albuquerque, which is to help folks who are perhaps, you know, homeless or have other types of issues to provide them temporary work and to pay them for that. But also to ensure that they have direct access to human and social services. The reason I bring this up is because our very own Mr. Buhr has actually been asked to sit on the team to evaluate the two nonprofits who have submitted to help run the program. Also, it's our understanding that Pierce County is going to make this available to, you know, cities who may wish to participate. And so certainly, the city of Lakewood is standing by. We have done our own internal evaluation of whether or not this program would work specifically in Lakewood, run by Lakewood. And we've kind of held off on that because, you know, Pierce County taking a much more regional and broader perspective, we think, might be a better effect. So hopefully, there will be an opportunity for a partnership there with the Pierce County. And again, that's something that will keep you appraised of as it, as it moves forward. Last week, our team here at the city, planning, engineering, our communications team, met with the folks from WashDOT regarding the I-5 JBLM corridor improvement project. So they are finalizing the design-build process. They expect to be able to announce who they're going to be awarding the contract to as soon as next month in June. And then they expect to begin turning dirt on replacing the two interchanges, Berkeley and Thorn Lane, simultaneously later this year or at the latest, early 2019, as well as adding two lanes of traffic from Gravelly Lake Drive all the way down to, I think it's the Stilikum-Dupont interchange. And that will be all completed and open by about 2021, 2022. As part of the design-build process, and I haven't seen any of the schematics yet, if you remember on, on the interchanges, they were going to have that dog bone concept. So they've kind of moved away from that, gone back to more of a roundabout approach. And one of the primary purposes for that was to save cost, however, not at the risk of, you know, the flow or the movement of traffic. And so again, it's moving forward. I do want to really compliment WashDOT. They have been an absolute pleasure to work with. Matter of fact, once they have everything all nailed down and the contract awarded, they do want to come and give this body a presentation. But I do really want to thank them. They're, they're really, really good to work with. Also, I had a conversation last week with their, the regional director, John Wynans. And he is still working with Sound Transit to try and get the connector road built here in the near future. And so they're, you know, they've completed the necessary reports. So now they're in negotiations in terms of, you know, the section of Sound Transit property that needs to be given to WashDOT to build that connector road. Right now, on the website, you'll see that that connector road is out in 2021, 2022. However, the WashDOT team, they would like to do that sooner. Also, that project, it's a 25, $30 million project, so it doesn't have to be incorporated into the larger corridor project. It can be a design-bid-build project all by itself, which means it can move relatively quickly once they come to an agreement with Sound Transit. But again, we do have the assurances of WashDOT that, that project, they want to get that done sooner rather than later. Ms. Kraus was up here talking about our current biennium from a budgetary standpoint. Last week, we kicked off internally the process to develop the 2019, '20 biennial budget. I think you're going to see some different looks and takes to the budget as we move forward, particularly with a key focus on data, a key focus on performance measures, as well as key performance indicators that we'll be sharing with the community. So more to come on that as we look out into the summer and, and the fall. And of course, your budget that will be proposed to you will be based on the foundation of your adopted goals and objectives, as well as your community vision. On the economic development front, I think, as I mentioned last week, has come to fruition. Seattle did implement a $275 head tax for businesses with more than $20 million in revenue. Our analysis shows that that's about, has an impact on about 600 businesses within, within Seattle. A couple of things happening. Long story short, here in Lakewood, we've actually drafted a letter, just a nice letter, just talking about the real positive attributes of who and what we are. And we're going to send that out and then we're going to start calling folks. Likewise, at the regional level, the Pierce County Executive is going to be holding a press conference tomorrow. And I'll let the mayor talk about, you know, the city of Lakewood's role in that. But we're also working with Pierce County, as well as the Tacoma-Pierce County EDB from a regional standpoint, on how we can piggyback on that, not just to benefit Lakewood, but Pierce County as a whole. So some really great partnering opportunities there from an economic development standpoint. And certainly, as it relates to Lakewood, you know, I think you've heard me say this before, even if we could, you know, get three, four, or five businesses with 20 or 30 employees, you know, that's, that's huge for our community. And certainly, we would greatly benefit and be a win-win situation all around. The other item I'd like to update you on, and as it relates to SSMCP, where they're playing a really strong supporting role, is what I call the New Madigan Hospital. And the reason being is because when I was in the military, they were building that thing. And actually, I never had an opportunity to use it. Matter of fact, I never set foot in it until last week. And, but apparently, it's not new. It's over 25 years old. It's approaching 30 years. And within, you know, Department of Defense, every 30 years or so, there, those medical facilities, they go through a master facilities process to determine what improvements need to be made to keep it going. So kind of taking a step back in the early 2000s, you know, when, when this country went to war on a multiple fronts, many of the, many of the medical facilities, both within the United States and outside the United States, had not gone through any upgrade. But the Madigan was still relatively new. So there was hardly any money that needed to come to that facility. So nationwide, overseas, you know, particularly in Europe and Asia, a lot of our facilities went through huge, huge upgrades. Well, guess which one kind of still lags right now? It's Madigan. And Colonel Place, who is the current commander over there, and he's going to be leaving here in the next few months, but the, the, the balls are in motion, the wheels are in motion for this to happen. He is looking for SSMCP's assistance in working with the state and with our state legislatures to see what we can do to have the Madigan identified as a Level One Trauma Center. There is only one Level One Trauma Center here in Washington State. It's Harborview. The Department of Health, who is the certifying agency on this at the state level, you know intuitively believes there probably is a need for one. So the Madigan has submitted an application or is going to be submitted an application to be considered a Level One Trauma Center. And here in our region, we wholeheartedly support that. And there's a number of reasons for that. Number one is because when the Madigan, if they go through this expansion to become a Level One Trauma Center, the emergency room is going to have to be increased significantly. They're going to add, and it's going to be, it's, we're talking like three, four, five stories. They're going to add a five-story, five-story behavioral health center facility. They're going to add two parking garages at least, so that people who are going to the Madigan don't have to walk so far, and just a number of other improvements valued at any upwards of $1 billion. Colonel Place estimates that it would be 300 to 500 new jobs, primarily civilian jobs in the medical field coming to the Madigan, of course, a direct benefit to, to Lakewood. But most importantly, for the health of our region, our state will not have to pay for a level, a second Level One Trauma Center. So we literally have a burden hand here, the courtesy of the Department of Defense. So there could be a little bit of resistance, though, from other medical institutions of the Madigan being a Level One Trauma Center. But at this point in time, we're working with them to essentially develop a position paper that we can share with a number of community stakeholders and key decision-makers on why this is a good thing. And so look for that here in, in, in the very, in the very near future. And I know the, the mayor was in, in that meeting with Colonel Place last week. And so if I missed anything here, I'm sure that he'll be able to cover that as part of his, his report. Unless you wanted to jump in now?
Well, just a little bit to add, those, you know, those 300 to 500 civilian jobs would be living wage jobs. They aren't working in a fast food outlet. The Colonel Place has indicated he personally spoke with 14 general rank, general officers in the Army Medical Community, which is all the general officers in the Army Medical Community, and has not received opposition from any of them. That doesn't mean they endorse the plan with its price tag, because the price tag's pretty steep in the allocation. But they all think it's generally a good idea. He has surveyed the entire country. And this is the only place where a major Army medical facility is not either a Level One Trauma Center or co-located with one. And that makes it a unique opportunity because, and it also, while there may be some external resistance, it also presents the opportunity for the community to not only have faster access to Level One Trauma Care, but to mitigate some of the costs to the medical establishment in this area. Because frankly, you know, the Army says, you know, they're paying all their people already. They're financing the facility and they don't have a profit motive. Their motive is training. They need, frankly, traumatic injuries and bullet wounds to practice on. And, and Harborview's built out, a really surprising figure that Colonel Place shared with us was that he currently pays $2 million a year just for apartment rent in Seattle to send Army doctors up to be at Harborview to get the training, so that his vascular surgeons can practice their craft instead of doing some other things. So it's an exciting opportunity and it would be a boon for the area and I believe a great boon for Lakewood.
And then also, we're going to reach out to the Puget Sound Regional Council as part of their Vision 2050 process to encourage them to put policy language in there that there is a need, not just in the Puget Sound region, but statewide, for a second Level One Trauma Center. And then, of course, also that the Madigan Army Medical Center, you know, be that, be that choice. So we're in the process of doing that as well. Last updates, just real quick, your calendars. On Wednesday, Wednesday evening, beginning of 5:00 PM, and you might have seen the kids out there this afternoon, the Clover Park School District over at the Clover Park High School, is going to have their 10th Annual Arlington Project Event. And then June 1st, a week from Friday, we're going to have a little bit of a celebratory event for our esteemed city clerk, Alice Bush. Though we're also going to do some kind of a recognition at your study session on Tuesday, May 29th. Surprise. I don't know if anybody told her on that. And then, and then, of course, on a very sad note, Dr. Claudia Thomas's memorial service will be held on Saturday, June 2nd. And the memorial service itself will be held at Harrison Prep with a reception to be held at the McGavick Center thereafter. So with that, Mayor, that's my report.
Questions for the city manager? And we'll go to Mr. Brenstetter.
Mr. Caulfield, I'm interested in the, the resource kits that SSMCP has coordinated that effort with the library, both in Pierce and Thurston County. I'm wondering if there's a future date when perhaps someone could give us a presentation, show us what's one looks like as to how that is going on. Thank you.
We can do that.
Right. And we'll go to council comments. Ms. Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend SSMCP, so I think it's been discussed and it was well-attended. On Saturday morning, I did the bladder cancer walk for Mrs. Joetha Smith. And for the notice, the short period of time that they noticed us, I think she had a good turnout. It was between 50 to 75 people that showed up. And so she was pleased with that. And Saturday night, the Clover Park Technical College had the 75th Anniversary Gala. That was fantastic. I want to thank our city manager and council member Brenstetter for being there, as I am a trustee there. So I really appreciate you being there. You make a difference. Their goal was 75,000. They exceeded it. It was like 88,000 and some. So to get a good job. Thank you. And tomorrow evening, I will be attending the North Lakewood Neighborhood Association meeting that will be held at the Elks Lodge here in Lakewood at 7:00.
Thank you. Mr. Bulkey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of notes. Went to the Greater Lakes Annual Gala, or I don't know if so much a gala, but annual event they have at the McGavick Center. And I know a lot of you and a lot of folks from the city were there. And I know they, they really do appreciate that and the role that they're in celebrating a Lakewood institution that is playing an increasing role in, in mental health in our community countywide. I did meet with the youth council tonight and asked them about, told them about our conversation surrounding bullying and, and got some very, some passionate comments. And we're going to have to have some further discussions about, you know, what we as a body want to do because they were, they, they do perceive it as a problem. They do have a bullying awareness week and they said it really only lasts a week. They need, that there's really no safe place in a school when someone is getting bullied. And they, and their, one suggestion was made by one of the members who
And, and they, and their, one suggestion was made by one of the members who is leaving, that then the next group think about an anti-bullying campaign. It also seemed, and maybe an area that we could help out is, maybe ask about counselors, because there are school counselors, and I believe that Greater Lakes may or may not have some counselors that go around the district, but, but it's pretty spare. It's pretty, pretty sparse, it sounds like, so that I, I think we need to find out from the district, you know, if, if, how many folks they hire from the outside, because there, it sounds like there is some person available who's outside of the district, who's not a district employee, who is available for, for, for the kind of counseling that probably would have helped here, and, or may have helped here, I don't know. And so they, they, they brought those, so there, I think there are some things to discuss, and, and if we wanted to be helpful to the district, that we, we could certainly, but I think we need to find out more information as to what kind of things they do within the district and, and how we can be of any assistance at all. And I'm looking forward to the Arlington Project. It's a wonderful project every year, and I'm very excited. I think I'm, I'm very pleased at the, at how quickly things are moving now, that the weather is very nice, and so how quickly things are moving on all the roads. Ford Still, Silicon Boulevard looks good, although I told the city manager, I know Mr. Cunningham, and I'm gonna say it here publicly, I know Mr. Cunningham, before he left, asked us at a retreat, what do you want? Do you want Silicon Boulevard to be this big gateway? What do you want us, you know, this is your major thoroughfare. And what I decided, and I'm, and I, and I, the, the section that's getting redone looks very nice, and there's really only one turn, but what I decided is, I would like it to be five lanes everywhere. I think that for traffic flow purposes, adding that extra lane, and I realize it's gonna add some cost right away, but when we go east of there, there's some areas where, you know, east from where we're fixing it to about Bridgeport, it's just four lanes. There's no, there's no middle lane. And so, and I think as traffic continues to get, to get heavier, we're gonna wish that we had that, that turn lane in the middle. So that's, I would throw, so it's nothing from a aesthetic standpoint, it's just something from a traffic engineer's standpoint, that we, I think, when we go forward, we should consider it, that it would probably be worth our while to purchase the additional right of way to add that lane. So now I've made it official. Thank you.
Mr. Bransheder.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've appreciated the events that my colleagues have mentioned that have taken place, and certainly it's been a busy, busy past week of lots of things to be involved with, and lots of citizens from the community involved in participating one way or another. Looking ahead, the Flood Control Zone District Advisory Committee that I represent the watershed on hasn't had a meeting in about three months, and part of that has been, there's been some uncertainty about within the flood control planning. And we're gonna be meeting here in a couple of weeks, but one of the things that relates to the district has been operating on a expectation that the Army Corps of Engineers would complete a study of the Pualap Carbon Watershed, so would come up with a major plan for long-term flood control projects within that thing over there, and then would provide the opportunity for federal funding for a significant percentage of that work. And what I've been told is that we're, at our next meeting, we are going to receive information that the Corps of Engineers has decided to cancel completing that project and that study, and what the impact of it is in terms of the loss of available funding. Now, what the Flood Control Zone District has done since its formation, after we stopped it being formed for a year, is they have gone forward, and they've, there have been several major projects that have been done that have been urgent, primarily, the primary projects have involved protecting sewage treatment plants from floodwaters that would, that would result them in being spilled, and completion of a major, major project in the, in the ordering area that had been in the works before the Flood Control Zone District was done. But there are about 60 other projects that were on, on a list, most of which, these the ones in the, were in the Pualap Carbon Watershed, and were expected to be, starting to move forward in some priority once the Corps of Engineers study was done. And now those projects and needs still exist, but the federal funding isn't gonna be at the level hoped for, and so there is going to be some pressure to take a look at, well, how do you increase the amount of revenue that the Flood Control Zone District is collecting from property owners in Pierce County? And that's going to revise the discussions about, do we have a county right weight, or do we have a tiered rate by watersheds, that that's somewhat reflected of the, of the benefit that the district is expected to provide in the, in the various watersheds, with the Pualap Watershed and the Nisqually Watershed having the most expensive and largest number of projects, while the, our watershed in the Chambers Clover Creek, and the watershed over on the Keppin Insel and Gag Harbor, even less so. So I think that this is going to be a, an item that was somewhat on our county legislative agenda, to not necessarily look at Lakewood getting caught up in a significant increase of that. And I hope to have, in, in June, some, some better information of the lay of the land for you, that'll help us craft what maybe needs to be our legislative agenda at both the county and perhaps at the state level around this issue going forward. The last thing, I was, I was glad to read that, that the, the library district is moving forward with the updating and offering some additions to the design of library cards, and that they reached out to youth in the county to submit proposed artworks, and that that's now in a, a phase of where the public is voting on the, on the 16 or so youth pieces of art finalists to become a library card. And, you know, like, like, my library card is the one piece of art that I carry around with me every day, you know? I, I have one. This is, this is the one I chose at the last chance to redesign it. But, but three of the young people whose works are finalists are from high schools here in, in, in Lakewood, and on, on our behalf, I sent them a letter thanking them for contributing their art and, and appreciating their, their efforts of going to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Barret.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was told, on the lighter side, that my absence last week didn't make the meetings any shorter. Is that correct? So it's clear that it's not I that makes us go overtime. Thank you. So on, in my travels, I was met with rain, hail, thunder, lightning, and windstorms. So it's really nice to be home.
No locusts.
No locusts, no.
Mr. Simpson.
I have my light on.
Yeah, you can get a real light on. There's a learning curve here. There we go.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to mention that on Saturday, I had the ability or the time to go to Armed Forces Day at McCord Field. It was the first time it was held, I believe, at McCord Field at Heritage Park. That was very well done. I mean, it was just a very nicely done six-hour presentation honoring the military. Secondly, I'd like to comment on a remark the city manager made concerning the head tax in Seattle. He may know this, but the Wall Street Journal also carried an article about the head tax, and they basically said in their editorial that small businesses in Seattle will be looking to leave. So I, I, I commend the staff for sending that letter, or will be sending that letter out, inviting our folks from the north to come down here and do business with us. And last, I'd like to make an observation, and that observation has to go with our discussion concerning the retail marijuana stores that the public heard, and that we certainly went over on this council. You know, every one of you, I, I have to say that I respect and admire, even though I disagreed with four of you. I was gonna get the.
So more than.
But the fact is, is that we smile. We understand one another, we respect one another, and I think tonight, regardless of the outcome, we've done good work. And for that, I say thank you to my six colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Simpson, I give you a hug, except to meet two people. It'd be all over me.
Yeah.
Mr. Whalen.
Well, thank you. On that, that last particular comment, I echo your sentiments, Mr. Simpson, on that. And I think the other thing that impresses me is we gave it a good, fair shake. We allowed as much process as almost humanly possible, more than I'm usually interested in pursuing, but we really gave it a fair shake. And so I think the comment tonight, your comment was well-taken. Thank you. We can disagree without being disagreeable. I appreciate that. In terms of events, on Tuesday, I went to the Gravel Lake Drive Open House for the Gravel Lake Drive Project, for the sidewalk project. One little note that I emailed the city manager about, I didn't realize, or perhaps I forgot, that there's a potential gap in the sidewalk on the side, non-lakeside, going from past Tower Road toward Washington. So there's really a gap in the roadway where you would actually try to access the public art if you were so inclined to take a sidewalk to go look at it. There won't be one. There'll be a little bit of a gap there. So we may think about that, whether there's resources or not at this point in time, but it's something we need to take a look at. I know that they've decided to kind of hold off on that, based on the potential roundabout that might come down the pike, but probably not in my lifetime, so I would prefer us to get the sidewalk in place now and worry about the roundabout in the next decade or two. The Greater Lakes Mental Health Event was fabulous the other night on Wednesday, well-attended, and certainly for a great cause. On the head tax issue, I was at the Economic Development Board, Board Meeting on Friday. It was discussed. I think the concerns that were mentioned there were echoed here tonight. Certainly, putting our best foot forward means selling our comparative advantages, as opposed to just poking Seattle in the eye. There's a lot to be poked, but I think selling our comparative advantages is probably the better course of valor on that one. And finally, on the Park Pavilion, I went to the Thursday Construction Meeting, and it is moving forward. The roof is sheeted. I think they're gonna finish the pouring of the concrete, both the apron and the ramps, this week, and it's coming along quite nicely. It's on task and on target. And the roadway, if you haven't been out there to the park, the curbing was in this weekend for the overlay of the road, and it's gonna be beautiful. I took some folks around who don't live in this area to the various project sites and the various construction work that we've got going on, and people were really impressed with all of the construction development and road infrastructure work. So kudos to staff on that. That's it.
Thank you. So as the city manager mentioned, we, we did meet with the leadership at Madigan regarding a Level One Trauma Center. That, the first, I just add that the first phase of that is going to the State Board of Health, who has to determine that there is a need. That's before the certificate of need. They just have to open the process up and do an analysis, and Colonel Place is, I think, confident that there is a need based on population and projected population. State of Washington, Oregon has barely half the citizens of the state of Washington, and they have two, and they're both, they're co-located in, in Portland. So, and while there may be some logic to placing one in eastern Washington, there isn't an extra half billion to billion dollars to put in a facility which would lose money. So there's not a great, they had one at one time and closed it down. So that looks good. I, I missed a number of the weekend activities, getting acquainted with my now-week-old grandchild in San Diego, which I'm sure he'll remember. And my wife did pass him for brief moments. We had to use a very high-speed shutter to catch a picture with me. The Beechers Foundation had another meeting with kind of a round group of, rump group of folks. It included Clover Park School District Administration and county folks, and former council member Helen McGovern-Pilot at, in a leadership role to get a, this health, healthy foods initiative, training for, for kids and their parents, going in particularly the Springbrook area. So that hopefully is getting legs, will add some value to our community. I had the opportunity to emcee the SSMCP Elected Officials Council on the 17th. That was the most well-attended one yet, and had some new faces, which was a good thing. The breadth of that organization has grown, and I think it's doing good things for the South Sound and its relationship with the base and the impacts of the base. The, along that, that line, the, I don't know if we discussed it last week, but the National Defense Authorization Act, known as the NDAA, markup took place in the House, the appropriating BLADI, and that markup added a bucket for, that didn't exist before, for off-base infrastructure in the civilian community that is not part of the MilCon budget, so it doesn't have to compete with hangars and debarricks. It also is not part of the Defense Access Road Program, which is essentially stagnant. The surprise to me was, Mr. Caulfield and I had heard from the Senate staffers within the last six months, that they expected that to happen in the markup, but they only expected a bu, a bucket. They didn't expect anything in it. This bucket has $100 million in it for the next fiscal year. So it's anticipated that that, if that makes it through, that it will, will continue and provide an opportunity for us, particularly with respect to turning the terminus of Northgate Road to Washington into an arterial, like it should be. I will, in, in, in credit and no credit context, we talked about the, you know, Mr. Caulfield also talked about the HELP program. The genesis of that was actually here, when Mr. Caulfield and I looked at it, the Albuquerque Program, and it just didn't make sense to bring it forward because of the, there wasn't a critical mass Lakewood by itself. But it looked good. My day boss said, go to Albuquerque and find out. I went now, close to a year ago, to Albuquerque, spent a day with homeless folks, working on one of those work crews, brought it back. We needed a name when we went to the supplemental budget to the council, Pierce County Council for it, and HELP stands. and HELP stands for Homeless Empowerment Labor Program. And I will confess to being the author of that, and it took me exactly 30 seconds. So if it sounds bad, it is. But we came up with something that would catch. The two, the, the business head tax credit idea actually started here last Friday night. I mean, last Monday night. Again, using some synergies with my day job, I mentioned that to the county executive, and it's had people working at it. And so far, Q13 was the first one to tweet it out and put it on Facebook. It's gone, this idea has gone, since the call for the press to come tomorrow for the 3:00 press conference, which will be out on South Hill, the old matsu cheetah Fairchild Buildings, which are now data center. The tweet has gone viral, and there are about 1,500 shares on Facebook of Q13's tweet. That doesn't count the News Tribune article and everybody else. And the way it is, the way it is crafted, because in order to literally make the news cycle and try to distinguish Pierce County and its constituent cities from being, as being different than Seattle and not getting thrown in the same bucket, particularly to people outside looking in saying, oh, those, those are where the crazy people live, we don't want to go there. It's more distinguishing than enticing in some ways. The proposal will be that the various mayors, and there'll be about eight, 10 of us, along with the county executive, will commit to bringing to their councils a proposal to institute a tax credit or rebate in the amount of $275 or more for new family wage jobs in 2019 on a one-time basis. Not a huge amount financially, but it is, and yes, it is kind of kicking the shins to Seattle, but people have to understand that that line between Federal Way and Milton means something, and that we are more business-friendly and inviting here. Or it isn't just saying, hey, come on down, it's saying, open for business, even if our neighbors to the north aren't. And so that's going to be interesting, it's a, probably be at least probably five TV stations, radio stations, and the like, and we'll, we'll see where, where that goes. But I will, I will be in the background unless there's a difficult question that nobody's primed for. That's my role, is to stand there, try to look distinguished, and let other people talk until they, somebody gets stumped. But start it here, folks, and your, your acknowledgement and encouragement was essential. Tuesday, there's a farewell for Colonel Sankis, sponsored by the Air Force Association at the Country Club. I'll be attending that as well as her change of command on Thursday. On a personal note, she's invited me to visit at Andrews, I've never been to Andrews, but confirmed that it's very unlikely that, without even asking, it's very unlikely you can get inside Air Force One. What has hap, the reason she's leaving a year early, there's two reasons that a wing commander leaves early. Something good, where they flunked a nuclear inspection. They pass a nuclear inspection, the person who is in charge of the 89th Air Wing, I believe it is, that is responsible for Air Force One, and that, that transportation module is, was called to, received a higher calling because of an unexpected vacancy, and she was the one they selected from wing commanders nationally to take over the detail of Air Force One. So with that, is there anything we need to do? And we're Jim.